I hope this is a lot of talk. It's part of the war.
Are you feeling okay?
I'm fine, yeah. Quick, just a couple like, oh, they're right here on the desk.
Hold on.
You go for it now.
Well, I, I know, like, everybody I know has it. You know, and I've said this last year, I said we had it last January, and we did.
Stream is on.
This time, it was so like that, it was very great.
Okay, six o'clock, stand for the pledge, please. Okay, first order of business, approve the minutes, December fifteenth, regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
December sixteenth, special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we got a change to the agenda, we're moving eight E to right now. Resolution, approve appointment, deputy superintendent of schools, superintendent of schools, and acceptance of the employment agreement. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Gelfus, you want to say something?
Uh, I just, uh, really and truly, uh, wanted to share with you how excited and anxious and so grateful for the opportunity, uh, to work with the students, the staff, and the families of the Donville School Community, and, uh, looking forward to working with the board, the administration. It's a great honor, it's a great privilege, uh, to, to be in this district, in this leadership role, and, uh, you know, I, um, just finished, if I can add, just doing an inspection, um, on a place that's within walking distance of here, maybe somebody spotted me, I might be a neighbor of one of you, uh, if everything goes well with the inspection, but I was down there for about three hours, and, uh, really looking forward to being a member of this community. Looking forward, uh, well, actually, also, I really appreciate the process that the school board, uh, went through and with, uh, Sandy, uh, and, and her work, working with the district, and how the board, very extensive search, um, you know, process, five interviews, um, and I have to tell you, and I did share this with Sandy, and I believe I shared it with the final stakeholder group, which, um, it, when I, as, as the process continued, I was excited, but I became much more excited and more driven to want to be your next superintendent. So, again, I'm, I'm very, uh, I'm very grateful for the opportunity, uh, I look forward to working with Mr. Carriga, um, and months moving forward, I want to be available, uh, if invited to any meetings, uh, working with the budget and so forth, and I'm really looking forward to it. I, I want to dive in, I'm going to be available, leading up to my May third, uh, start date, and, um, I just can't tell you how, how pleased and happy I am, and I'm going to do everything I can to be an outstanding superintendent for this school district and this school community, so, thank you again. I do appreciate, uh, your confidence in me, and I'm going to do everything I can, everything in my power, always putting kids first, so thank you. I'll try not to get too long-winded. And I'm very pleased, thank you so much. I also, no, I was going to say, now it's time to get some apparel. And I am so grateful, I'm a big hat person, I, I wear hats all the time, so, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, we can't, uh, extend our appreciation to Sandy Scherle enough for helping us through this process. Haven't done it three, four years ago, and now again, it's so much easier when you have somebody like Sandy helping you guide the process, and we really, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to correspondence.
Correspondence, SBI certificates of attendance, that's Spofford, new school board member academy, parts one and two, he attended on October seventh, twenty twenty, and October twenty first, twenty twenty. Congratulations.
Moving on to the financials, any questions on the bills? Not the football team. You had your gla- you had your broken glasses on, I was ready.
Oh, Bill, see what?
Yes, I have, uh, three, actually, uh, maybe, uh, work teams bill, this is more eight twenty-six, uh, page five of eight, uh, check number four, one, three, nine, and it's, uh, forty-nine hundred dollars.
That was for the, um, fans on the bonds, they did all the billing for us for the bus project, so that was their charge for doing all that work.
And, uh, the capital project, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars, that's page five of eight also, for, uh, that, uh, are we done, done with their planning?
Well, they're, they're, they're the ones that do all the, Eric just sent, uh, they actually sent an email to the state for questions, which the state hasn't approved in that capital project, so they're the ones really that is, that are doing the, that kind of the work, um, on that capital project, so as they do all that, they'll bill us for any hours that they put in the plan.
When will we possibly see a new heating unit now included?
Um, hopefully between spring and summer, I think it's really pushed more to summer now because of the census removal, so I think they push it more towards the summertime to infer.
And, uh, neighborhood center, um, page six of eight, we've got, uh, how many students are served by that particular?
About forty.
Forty?
I think it was more than that, it's more than forty, because I was just talking to, um, Ms. McCary about it, about the bill, she's the one that's actually, uh, kind of just checked the dates, uh, with the provider, with the neighborhood center, and I think she said more than forty, I think more closer to sixty.
Yeah, we have sixty-nine, like, for.
Sixty-nine, I was going to say sixty-nine, but I didn't, it was sixty, so, yeah, we're, they're utilizing that service a lot, and that's a new contract that you guys, um, signed right through.
Is that, is that right across the board, the numbers, sixty, or is it, do we find a spike in the high school or junior high, or can you just?
Um, I think that question leads, but I, I would say about fifty-fifty, um, I, I know that there was a surge at one point where there were quite, quite a few new high school referrals, um, but I know that the counselor is booked solid.
One person?
One person.
We increased, we increased the days to share, we increased the number of days that they're here to accommodate a larger number, and it's a good thing we did.
Is one going to be enough?
Yeah, realistically, I mean, she's, she's maxed out in open space right now, and she's
split between our district and the larger districts.
Well, it's contracted through neighborhood centers, which is technically a neighborhood center, and we subcontracted that to the school, right?
Well, I mean, that's good, I'm just saying, that's just, it's an overwhelming number, I didn't think it would be that hard.
I think kids are struggling especially now, right? Um, do we still use Catholic charities at all for that as well? So, the number is actually a bit higher.
Now, how do they, uh, interface with the Catholic charities? Or don't they?
They don't technically, uh, Catholic charity can stay more specifically to the high school component, but Catholic charities can provide counseling for if raised and lower, it's more preventative service, um, which is more applicable to the older students, but for younger students, um, I think Catholic charity worker does provide instructional, um, components, but with us being on condensed schedules, we may not schedule those yet because obviously we have to get through two days, we want to make sure.
So, does the counselor get to meet them in person, or is it all virtual?
Um, actually, up till about a month ago, they were in person, but now it's all virtual, and we've found that it's been quite successful, this actually, last week, we did start to do, uh, remote services, so the students could actually attend the session while they're here in school, but it is being.
Thank you.
Any questions on the bills? Treasuries report, questions on the treasures report?
Uh, CV, CSG tuition nineteen twenty.
What is this?
It's, uh, it's actually something we received, usually I thought tuition was something we paid.
No, that was for, um, Foxford, their billing to Central Valley for last school year, so they paid us that.
And, uh, the other one, uh, hundred and eighteen thousand for the, uh, disbursements for postage, December wires, near state with the rapid trans- uh, transportation.
So, December wires is our, um, in trucks and our bonds?
Okay.
So, that's something that's possible.
Right, didn't understand the purpose, sorry. Does wires cover anything else?
No, normally, we don't do wires for anything else, I mean, we could, but for our district, it's easier for us to just do bonds by wires. A lot of centers not wire payments, but we are, we need that stuff.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, need a motion to approve the bills and treasure report as presented.
I'll make that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Reports, elementary building, Mrs. Christman.
Good evening, everyone, um, just a couple of, um, points that I wanted to make, one, um, thanking the parents and thanking our staff, um, we did have a push toward providing more opportunities for live instruction at the elementary level, and it has been quite successful in, you know, to accommodate students both live in their classrooms as well as live, uh, virtually, for students that may be home on remote learning, um, we have done our best to try to accommodate families, uh, with an increased number of requests for remote learning, and we're really, really proud of both the parents as well as the teachers for just trying to navigate this very difficult problem and prioritize education. We also do have Sustoya coming in for, has a part to work with our K board staff, she's on campus virtually, um, to support them with her development for focusing and, uh, bringing our ELA sense.
And your, uh, short stint in stardom, that, uh, that video, does that, does that go out to public, or what does that video actually do?
The video was created to present the board institute, um, and it was shared with the superintendents, or several superintendents, and for Magnas and, um, Bosens. Right now, the community schools program, we are trying to navigate, um, creating a co-serv with the many Bosens, and, um, Sandy, actually, there is a meeting to kind of test our deck for Bosens as well, um, to try to provide our, the model that we started, um, the mi- we started, um, but the model we're involved with to other school districts.
Now, how many students can that accommodate?
That, that number of sixty-nine is where the, that's the community schools, the system, where we identify students, match them up with resources, and then, um, ultimately, that's called the link system, we, we obtain the link system through the community schools now.
It sounds like it's working.
It's amazing. I think that we're still in the growing phase, but I think even just, just in the realm of social emotional support, it's phenomenal, but it also deals with insecurities, it deals with, um, family have a fire, immediately go Walmart, buy, buy a family clothes, like, it's, the resources are endless, it's in the realm of dental, dental, um, home goods, emotional support, parenting support, you essentially identify the need and they can find someone to support.
Now, do we have a dental van come to the school in that year?
Um, we had in previous years, we had actually signed a contract with a different company to bring a dentist into our school building, that was something that we did push pause on, and quite frankly, we're not sure that they could staff it even, we had pushed pause on because of the close to visitors, um, but honestly, I'm not sure that they're staffed enough to accommodate it anywhere right now. I think that just because, um, most school districts are not allowing that interaction with the public, that it's kind of paused the entire program.
Thank you.
Especially with the increased hygiene things that prevent this, that they need to accommodate right now.
Just a shame that you couldn't, can't catch some of those kids that are right on the borderline, you know, some problems, you know? Thank you.
You're welcome. With the community schools, I see ICANS moved into the old Hurkmore County Trust Building in Hurkmore, is that going to open more opportunities to interface them with our district?
ICAN is actually a part of the SOC grant, which was the other thing that you and I were talking about before the meeting, and that is identifying an ICAN worker for each school district, um, quite honestly, I have not heard much from or about that grant, most other school districts contain family school navigators, we already had one, so, kind of because we were ahead, we didn't necessarily reap the benefits of that in that grant, um, but one of their goals was to provide an ICAN worker.
Thank you. High school building, Mrs. Lover.
Absolutely, uh, two, two quick things, we have a speaker name, um, congratulations to our eighteen, our so-called, the twenty-four national DMS society, there will be some virtual town boards going out for that, and then I've been working with, I think, Dean Harris, that was for me, uh, with St. Mary's, they have a vaccination, like, given to schools of older vaccines, uh, right now, uh, we've got about seventy-four people signed up for it in-house, uh, they said they could get us fifty vaccines, and it's just waiting for it, I've been right now, double that, so, very excited.
And any of our staff, will they be able to get them anywhere from, um, clinic?
And so, uh, because we're waiting, and it's a waiting game, the encouragement was, you know, sooner somewhere else, uh, and yes, there, there have been, like, sale who have found, and that was like, and, you know.
I know, or, I know, like, a handful of my staff that not necessarily move off hospital, but that, that we have patients, um, it's not open yet, but they're soon growing.
Latest I know you can get in is March thirty, that's how far out they're going.
Thank you. Deena, go ahead.
I want to go to, to your bullet points, one was the, uh, characteria outlet here for the educational, uh, you know, expediency of, uh, is it working well?
It is, it is, I actually, that's what Jessica and I were talking about at the beginning, uh, with that, our numbers are growing, uh, with, with that, and just really starting to target kids, we're doing that place just for, to be a little bit more disciplined, and more have a good access.
The other bullet point was your grading policy, what's it presenting?
Yeah, absolutely, so we have a grading policy that went into place in two thousand twelve, and just over a year, it's been a process that we've had to revisit, uh, the most significant change, uh, was just a temporary piece for this year, and, uh, just, and because there are such philosophical differences with grading, we're doing smaller nades at each year, and so, the biggest piece that we've designed so far is just our midterm policy, uh, in the past, we've had midterms do twenty percent of the quarter to average, and we just thought that was an unhealthy practice, especially in light of hyper learning, not everyone has the same ability to, uh, internet or finance, and we'll handle that, so, so we, we kind of put a halt on that and just, uh, said that it should be treated, if a teacher is going to give a midterm, it should be treated as a regular test and not as twenty percent.
Is that, is, can, can we do that on a local level like that, is, we need to run any guidance from the state too?
Yeah.
Do whatever you want.
Correct, correct, if those are internal decisions, some schools, uh, have, especially in Loski, they'll be yesterday, uh, in the spring, they just decided, pass fail, you know, and, and not have, you know.
The only reason, yes, is the state is into every month we do.
Yeah.
Into our lunch, I mean, if we have too much milk, whole milk, very good, so I'm wondering, how much should I know?
Sure, and there, there are certain pieces that we have to, uh, divide by what the law says, in particular, earning credits and earning credits for graduation, that case needs to stay, uh, with, with that, there is a lot of discretion in terms of what district they're doing.
And we're still having the ELA test rate?
Uh, so, in that pool, January regents exams, uh, have been canceled.
Right, but we're still having?
We will have, uh, right now, the, the June exams are still, uh, ongoing, um, the piece that I'm kind of looking at right now is, I think, territory testing will be a great determinant of what June will look like, and right now, uh, New York State does have a waiver to the Northwest Department of Education about waiting in territory for this year, uh, we're waiting to see what our new secretary of education is going to rule after.
That's interesting. So, I guess.
Thank you. Deena, students' athletic director for, Mr. Zalkowski.
Obviously, we're still under pause with our winter sports at this point, with no definitive timeline, um, the meeting I was in today, they've asked the state to give a date where they can tell us something, February fourteenth, it seems to be the date, so, we're not sure they'll give us any information on that date, but, uh, that may affect fall two, which is scheduled to begin March and April also, so, it's kind of a waiting game, um, in different areas, have different spikes right now, so, we will not know anything until the state, you know, puts forward guidance.
Logistically speaking, is there even a way to fit all the sports in the week, like, say, they come out February fourteenth, your team come through, and there, you're go on everything?
They kind of explain it like a scheme roller. And what I mean by that is, you're going to want to have all high-risk sports play, and I understand that, and I, you know, I feel for every single athlete and every single sport, logistically, it, it will be very difficult, considering you have all the sports, fall two, winter, and spring to fit in, so.
Multiple, student and multiple?
Sports, um, so, there's a lot that still needs to be worked out, and we can only do what we can based on guidance put forward, and we don't have that already, so, kind of still waiting.
Mr. Zalkowski, we have a football player that wants to play football, and he also wants to play another sport, is that going to be possible?
Okay, the two-sport thing actually came up today, um, it depends upon your league, the CSE league does allow it, and then it goes to your local school, um, there was talk today that pending, let's say, high-risk sports are approved as late as February fourteen, the whole idea, you may have some seasons going on at the same time, and we may have to look at that option, but it does become difficult, but yes, you can play multiple sports, two sports, and it does happen in other sections, um, right now, uh, it's not occurring, but it's something that is being looked at, it was brought up today in the meeting I was in after school with other athletic directors.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Building and grounds reports attached, notice our Kansai pump has been installed at great savings because of our in-house work. Any questions?
I got one question. The boiler that had the multiple fuses blown on that work order is still, is that boiler operating?
No, not right now, the backup is working fine.
This isn't the one we had a problem with two times?
No, I don't believe so, Dave didn't say it was the same one, um, I did ask him for an update on it, and he said that they're just waiting for the parts to come in, and it's going to be, uh, fixed with in-house once he gets them, but we're just waiting on the parts. Nothing to be worried about, it was weird, because he came back, Dave was out for a couple weeks, and he came back and said, was there a power outage, or a power surge while I was out, and I said, no, and he's like, are you sure, and I said, they're positive, there, you know, usually we would know if there was some kind of power outage, he's like, all my fuses are blown on the bo- boiler, and I said, there's no power outage, so, it was kind of like a strange occurrence.
And that boiler wasn't running?
Right.
It was off.
Because that sounds more like a power surge than a power outage.
That's, yeah, that's what he said, and I said, no, there was, there was not one because we don't be notified, so.
Right, then, then the boiler that was running didn't have any issues the whole time he was out, so.
Kind of a strange little thing.
That's never happened before, is it?
Not that he mentioned.
How old is that boiler?
Oh, I think they put it in when Mr. Pickles, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Wasn't it? They're not bad all right.
Did you know the boiler problem?
Two thousand eight project.
Yeah.
And everybody's boilers that were here since fifty-three.
There's still boilers here, certainly.
No.
Transportation report is attached, any questions on that?
Just one, is Joe pretty good on, uh, his status of drivers, and I know that he's an issue for a while, and he has enough people.
Um, yeah, we're, we're good at stats, it's just that now, we're certainly have people coming now because of segment, oh, but, so, just, um, finding stuff, so, there are companies that, but we're fully full.
Revenue analysis, expenditure analysis are attached for your reference.
Yes, overall, for our spending this year, do you see a right on point or a little under?
Um, for spending, we are a little bit under, um, we were pretty, um, strategic, and some of our grants didn't come through, but we did put some of our, um, operational costs in, we should be able to do about that, so, we're pretty much in the grand, um, so we did book some operational costs, too, those greater simple help us, um, but, yeah, we're, right now, we're good, um, under, under spending, our, kind of, they look great, um, I guess Mr. Pickle a little fancy, a little spreadsheet every month, telling kind of the overs and unders that we have every month, and I compare it to last year, and we're pretty much on point to the, um, uh, to the theme from last year, you know, so there's not much of areas where we were last year at the beginning of the year, not some month by month, but that's, I think.
So, today, the governor came out with his idea for the next budget, and then his budget director had a big meeting, and, uh, I saw a thing from, I don't remember if it was NISBA, uh, the screenshot, one of the slides, the Senate out, and, uh, the twenty percent reduction may be reduced to five percent, and we may get the difference payment back to us, and then the budget for next year projects an increase in state school aid, but that's based on the federal government giving money to the state, basically a pass through, but, uh, that's what the governor said today, so, he's optimistic with, uh, the change in government that is in the same party as him, that he's going to get what he wants for the budget, so, hopefully, things are turning around.
We'll believe he'll only keep the money, right?
Right.
I am, yes, I am working on the five-year plan, updating that, because we're through half of the school year two, so, kind of projecting out the end of the school year, so I am starting to work on that, and looking at projections for revenue for state aid, we've decided this is kind of, he gets what up for next year, like, in the upcoming, just so that we don't, um, you know, get ourselves into trouble when we begin next year.
No, that's probably the, the best way to go about it, the way things are going.
They said, you know what, Rick's been, they're kind of, they're like, if we do get any more, it's going to be, I mean, our fault at this point.
If there are no other questions, the motion to accept the reports as presented.
If there are no other questions, the motion to accept the reports as presented.
All in favor? Thanks for all those glasses tonight.
Yes, nothing made him down.
Old business, BOE policies, second reading and adoption, these are ones that were presented last month for the first reading. We've had time to review them. Motion to accept policies A. 1 through 7.
I'll move. I want to answer a question.
Are you on a one from last month or a new one that was presented this month?
Um, I think I'm on the one from last month. Prohibition of discrimination harassment.
That is.
I'm going to get it.
No, that's old one.
My question is, uh, we have the, um.
Oh, that's, yeah, the prohibition.
For next month.
That's next month. This month is the prohibition of discrimination and harassment, including sex harassment in employment.
What's your question? Tell me if you're all right.
Okay, let's do the motion on the old business first, and then we'll go to the new business. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business, special education plan presented in a packet, updated.
Sure, so I'll go over this briefly with you guys. This is something, I actually double-checked this because every year we've gone over the policy and the plan. And as we've been reviewing policies periodically, I started to question whether or not we had reviewed the special education policy annually, and we do not. So unless there's a change to that, we'll just continue to do that sort of on the same schedule that you're reviewing the rest of the policies. However, the board does need to review the special education plan and approve that on an annual basis because that really gets into the meaning of what we're doing here versus just following the guidelines around the state and federal government. So along with that, there are seven pieces that we need to go over each year. The first one, talking about the programs and services available to our students. In-house, we continue to offer resource room services to students at every grade level if they qualify for them. We do offer 15-to-one math and ELA for students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade, along with specialized reading at the elementary level. We have consultant teacher services for our students in grades seven through 12. 15-to-one ELA for our juniors and seniors, which is a credit-bearing class. A 15-to-one basic living environment, also a credit-bearing class, all in-house programs. And that changes from year to year depending upon students and their individual needs. Outside of this building, we utilize other places and programs for uses of a 12-11, a 6-11, a 12-14, and that's through HF and BOCs. We do also pay tuition to Little Falls, Frankfurt, and UCP for student moving placements in those programs. Preschool, we are able to continue offering speech and OT services as a related service, and we do have that available for our school-aged kids as well. We are still doing preschool evaluations and would look to continue doing that next year. Kind of two purpose with that. And one is there is not a ton of availability for those evals to be done, just going through her from our county. There are very few evaluators on that list, and every year, it seems like there are fewer and fewer. And then also being able to provide those services to our students because it is very difficult to get county-approved providers to come to our district to provide those services to students. Uh, the second component is identifying students, the number of students. We keep a census and register in the CSE office that does get updated quarterly. It includes the names of the students, the programs, that there is a service provider so that we have, you know, access to that. Last month, I think it was, we talked, or maybe in November, at the board meeting, talked about looking at my board minutes, the number of students who had transferred in. The reason we have to update that so frequently is I know in November, we had like seven kids come in that, you know, if you just look at our census and register from September, it looks vastly different as you go through a year. We do get referrals from teachers and from parents. And then for preschool kids, as younger children are transitioning from early intervention services to potentially getting preschool services, those recommendations do come from the county, and then I have meetings with the parents to discuss what the referral process looks like and then see the evaluator and services get informed. The third one is the method to evaluate student goals. We do send out progress notes or give them to parents quarterly along with report cards. They either get mailed home, or if it's parent-teacher conference time, the special education providers do go over those with the parents and give them to them in person. So they get those at least as frequently as report cards go. Uh, the last two kind of go, or the next two, four and five, go together. It has to do with the allocation of space for providers within the building and then outside the building for those BOCs programs. At this time, we have adequate space for our in-house programs. For our outside programs, there's a lot of pre-planning and conversation that goes on even before annual reviews, which start in March, so that BOCs, UCP, they know what types of programs districts are looking to have and can do hiring staff for those and also securing locations for them. It has been nice this year with progress being at Central Valley, just knowing that they're most likely staying where they are and not switching because we've had some years where programs have been at Herford Elementary School and then at Poland. And parents always want to know come annual review time, where is my kid's class this year? So I'm hoping that that becomes a little more stable and that people no longer have to pass. Uh, the next part has to do with the instructional materials that are used and making sure that what we are using gives kids equal access to the same textbooks, exams, and whatnot that their non-distinguished peers are using. And that has been something that I actually think COVID has kind of helped with because now every student has a device. We have provided students with iPads and other devices for purposes of communication and speech to text or text to speech. But I think kids are becoming more familiar with that and really utilizing that technology. And we have from time to time had to order exams in an alternate format. We had students who needed a large print and have needed to certainly take care of that. And then the last component that has to be considered each year is the budget to support such a plan. And this is a very rough estimate because we have, we are just starting the budget process. But looking at the services that we currently provide our students and the programs that we utilize and then figuring an increase for next year just based on, you know, the price of everything going up from one year to the next, we're looking at about $2,013,000 each to support the programs that we have here for our students.
Questions?
Do we still have students going to the Jazz Town?
We do. And that's actually something that, you know, we're considering for one year to the next. Those students will be aging out over the next couple of years, but even considering transportation. In the past, we have used Little Falls Fonda because it has been more prudent to do so. This year is the first year, I think, since I've been new, that we've transported those students myself. But that has been, you know, because we only have two students, we have eight or nine.
I see in your report, monthly, that, not every month, but we do get transfer students and new students coming in all the time, so that budget here could change dramatically?
Yeah, and while we do have students coming in, we also have students leaving.
Oh, really?
So, yeah, so now, I mean, you don't see that in minutes because we don't have meetings for that. But we do, this year at least, have more kids who have come in than have left. But that is something that we try to account for, looking at, you know, I'm getting ready for annual reviews, trying to estimate do kids need the same program that they have? This year will they need that again next year? And then leaving a little bit of wiggle room because you never know when you have a new family who is going to move into the district and their kids, they may have multiple kids who are high-cost.
Yeah, I get that's what I had, what I was going to ask you. And also, is there a maximum capacity that we can handle?
Uh, yes and no. I mean, you certainly can't tell someone that they can't have service because we are at capacity. There are a few things that you are obligated to do. You can file a variance with state edge to be able to have more students in a class. For example, resource room can only have five students in a section. But come the middle of the year, rather than opening another section of resource room, if you had a student who moved in and required that service, you could apply with the stage four variance to have one additional student. And then you have to verify, now that you know this kid exists, what are you going to do differently next year so you're not in this situation? The other thing is if you have a large number of changes that require you to consider how services would be made available, you would look at having to hire yourself.
I'm not saying not to have any services, you know, for any additional kids, but I'm just wondering if the state is very compliant and, and will work with us. Have we ever done that before? Had to ask you for answers?
I did already with you.
And they have combined with us. Great. Thank you.
No problem.
If there are no other questions, the motion to approve the special education plan is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, 2020, 2021 district calendar revision, January 29th is becoming a full day of instruction. The motion to approve the calendar. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Equipment disposal, IT.
Well, now with the calendar, just so that you know, I didn't want to do it yet. I think most of you probably heard of this new vacation day that they want to put on a, it's called June 18th. 18th day this year is on Saturday, so the majority of the BOCs has decided they would put 18th as a vacation, not vacation day, but a holiday. I'm not changing it yet because in order to do that, I'm using one of my snow days. So because right now, it's not mandatory, if I need that snow day, then we'll be in school that day. So I'm not asking you to change our calendar yet, but I just want you to keep in mind that that's coming.
And graduation day would most likely be the 26th.
Yes, right now, we have actually already started a program, already started putting together, including our keynote speaker. And we want to add, add that, I mean, putting our 10, um, several people.
Equipment disposal from the IT department. Extensive list, old smart boards.
How are the new smart boards being made? Start keeping themselves?
Um, the principal would probably be able to give you more updates because I'm here and it's like, come on, and they'll be able to probably.
There's a learning curve. There is, and it's not just started up and, you know, and that piece has been, um, hard to implement. And that, but I feel it's getting better and some of the initial things that there really were some defects that were, oh, so that is better. But it, there's a lot to it.
Is Matt still getting help from Mr. Phil Green still here?
If there are no other questions, the motion to approve the equipment disposal as listed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
BOE policies, first reading and review, one through three.
Alan, your question?
The prohibition of discrimination harassment. Uh, page four of 19. Question that I have is you have principals who are the dignity act coordinators who are the fact finders. We have, is there a set when it gets ready to? I didn't know if they were appointed at the beginning of the year or they just get appointed when we need it.
No, I didn't find out which one's up yet.
It's page four of nine. It's, it's a tab, it's section, when it says, when a court complains, plays a passive discrimination by the dignity act coordinator, the superintendent shall designate another school official to conduct necessary fact finding.
So, so one of the, one of the pieces too, and I need to, this is the first reading, we need to move in this properly. But our dignity act coordinator is purposely not in this range. It's our guidance counselor, Marilla. Exactly, because she's a neutral party that kids can then go to to bring up that issue exactly, then that is our jobs to do that.
What it says in here is you are the principals of the dignity act coordinators.
What page is that?
It's right on there. Check the coordinator.
Oh, it's page two, section four. It lists you as the primary dignity act coordinator.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that on purpose we have chosen a more neutral party to be.
So, so this is going to change that? All right.
Four, we can do.
Wasn't your other Title IX coordinator, those, those people are named?
Yeah, that's me.
You know, Mr. Duncan? Get there, so. So I'm just wondering why these aren't called out, too?
So in that same thing where it says the principals, we as a board can appoint any school employee as a dignity act coordinator? That's the last sentence in that paragraph. So we can continue with not having the principals as a dignity act coordinator? We just have to appoint them?
Why don't you kind of review this in a little bit?
That's the point of the first reading and review.
Good job.
So by the way, just those two things?
Yes.
I've got a set of these came from labor relations. So I'll send them my questions back and wait for them to respond.
Sounds good to me.
And I'll get in touch with you.
Plus.
Well, just to answer your question, but then it will be with a weekly report.
Okay.
We already completed eight E. at the beginning. Information only schedule of the 2021 BOCs budget presentation to component, Board of Education.
That will be virtual, by the way. Unless things change right now, that's planned to be virtual.
Ours is March 16th. Okay, Board Forum, Mrs. Huddleston, you can go first.
Oh, can you hear me, everybody?
Absolutely.
Okay, hi. Now, now, you're in the discussion. I'm not going to be long, okay? First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Julius Lefkowitz as our new superintendent of DCS. And just a little thought to him to always remember that we bleed blue in Dowager, so he has to remember that. I want to congratulate the 24 middle school students who are inducted in the National Dinner Honor Society and 18 high school students inducted in the National Honor Society. To all of you, a great job. I'd like to thank Mr. Zalkowski for keeping us up on the softball, the golf project, and thank Dave and Wayne for fixing the shot clock system that was not functioning. I also want to thank your administration, your teachers, your entire staff at DCF and parents for everything they are doing in our hybrid system of in-school and virtual learning. I'd like to thank Mr. Coriga for your leadership and giving us a sense of normalcy in his difficult times. And Sandy, Alan, I can't thank you enough for everything you do for me. It's not an easy job keeping me virtually connected to all the board meetings when I'm here in Florida. And Sandy Sherwood, I can't begin to thank you enough for all the time that you put into our superintendent. Sir, thank you again. And I miss all of you. I should be home in about a month or two, maybe a month and a half. I should be home in about a month or two, maybe a month and a half, okay? It's been a little bit cold down here, not as cold as what you had, but it's been cold. And hopefully we'll get a little bit summer before I come back. That's it for me. That one bit short, Scott?
That was good, Mary Lou. We really enjoyed it. Mr. Maxwell?
I did everything Mary Lou said. Plus, I'd also like to welcome Mr. Gilfis to our community. And, um, I was fortunate enough to hear the presentation about community schools and Crystal was an integral part of the presentation. She was in there a lot. And, um, it's too bad that more of us didn't get a chance to listen to it. And on January 27th and 28th, uh, SPI is going to have their virtual meet the candidates that are supposed to go to their respective Albany or Washington to lot labor for, you know, get more money for us, so to speak. So if you have a chance, listen to that. That's all I have now.
Uh, I just wanted to say, welcome, Mr. Gilfis. Congratulations. Uh, thank you to Mr. Coriga for all of your hard work this year. And thank you, uh, Sandy, for all of your help in this process. And thank Sherwood. Thank you all administrators. I know this is tough and I appreciate everything that you do, Jessica. And thank you for all of our members. Thank you for all your hard work. Did you hear any of that? Thank you for the Christmas present, Mrs. Huddleston.
You're welcome.
I also wanted to thank Mr. Gilfis for replying and, uh, congratulate him on making it to the final and, uh, to welcome to the, the group. Um, we seem to have a lot of fun most times, so it should be all right too. So, but yeah, now everybody's, everything's been mentioned and you didn't hear a good one.
Mary Lou said everything I wanted to say. And, uh, I just wanted to also make a note on the scolder athletes that, uh, were noted. And, uh, Mr. Zalkowski for his diligence on this Shaq clock. And, uh, I know it's always about money when I talk about money. I'm going to tell you, if you don't have the gasoline for your engine, and I'm going to say this over and over again, you're saving us that so we can have it. Thank you.
I think everybody said everything, but I'll add to it. Um, congratulations, Mr. Gilfis. Welcome to our family. Um, we look forward to working with you. Mr. Z, thank you for fighting fight, keep at it. I've got a senior at home.
I know.
And I feel terrible for these seniors because they're getting a worse deal than last year's seniors. Um, and thank you for remembering that to make sure that Mr. Gilfis fits in around here. Um, thank you so much to our teachers and our principals, um, just for having smiles on your faces for all the kids who came back. I know there were kids super excited to be here. Congratulations to our students and their academic achievements. Also not easy under these circumstances. And, um, Michelle, thank you for everything that you do with our special education plans and keeping us up to date on all the information. And Jessica, I hope you've had a good break because it's budget season now. So thank you for what you're about to do too.
So I would say all the same things. Congratulations to National Junior Honor Society and National Honor Society inductees. Mr. Gilfis, welcome to our school. Many thanks to our administration, our teachers, all our support staff and the parents at home for bearing with us and, and getting our students the education that they need. And, uh, I'll leave it at that because everybody else has said everything else. With that, we need a motion to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody anything else? Okay, motion to return to regular set.
No.
All favor.
Aye.
Can you hear the stream come back?
Do we ever decide what we're going to do if we ever actual snow day? Are we going to just hope that people do work all night day or?
Even if I always do a virtual snow day?
Yeah.
Um, no. Snow days are still available. Um, it's a choice that you make. The first one when we had that 20 inches of snow. We knew it was coming on Wednesday. We already virtual. So I told the teachers ahead of time, if we have a snow day tomorrow like we already thought we were going to, we would just be virtual. So we were ready for that. But if it snowed like crazy tomorrow, I am not going virtual. I will call a snow day. So we have three to use. So I'm not going to worry about having to go to virtual until I have it. Because many times, like for instance, there were times I wish I had called a snow day even though we were already virtual. Because it took a lot of people long time to get dug up. I really wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking about the fact that if we were already virtual, we'll just go with it. So there was a lot of discomfort. Not that anybody called the school and ranting and raving, but I know they had difficulty. So that's the trouble with the virtual. You know, that means people are still working so they can't go out and dig out their homes.
Right.
To get ready. So no, I will not always call a virtual day. It will depend on the weather and it will depend on if we have days to get. And right now we've got three. Plus the one I took from our four total that will depend on the Juneteenth day unless we're in trouble. And then we will be in school that day and we'll use that snow day as we need it. So that's the plan. Um, as you know, so far this year, the plan doesn't always work. Uh, but that's, that's where I'm going with it right now.
Can we carry snow days over to next year?
No. Which is why we have to give them back. The teachers have 181 day calendar. Students have only got 180. So if we don't use the snow days, typically here on my contract, they get the day before the holiday weekend added to it. I've already talked to teachers about the Juneteenth days so they can know that. Otherwise I'd have to take it from somewhere else. And currently they don't want to lose a day off the February or April break. Uh, and I'm quite frankly in agreement with them because our, our teachers and staff, they're tired. They're going to need this February break. They don't need us taking days away from them unless Canada has already taken two of their February days back. So that's going to be different for them. But right now I'm hoping we can get to the February break and give everybody a week off. So that's where I am with that.
Do you see the state changing anything in our, uh, wanted to keep money to keep in our fund balance?
No. That's the talk. Whether that's going to happen or not, you do not know. They have asked to allow us to report the cost.
Do you see like the COVID in this whole?
That was, that's the reason.
20% cutback.
Yeah, that's the reason and the knowing that people. Well, as you know, that's why I would have kept extra money from last year's budget. You know, I'll take the little slap by the government with our little letter that they'll ask for. Uh, but if we don't get that by the end of the year, we completely fill our reserves. Still have money for this year's fund balance towards next year's budget. So I'm holding on to that as best I can. So far we haven't really spent any of it, so. Uh, consider us to be in good shape there. We're going to be getting back, we think, about $100,000 from the health insurance from last year. So this year's increase will be less than it normally would have been. So we're getting some breaks finally, but I'm, I'm really worried about what the governor's going to put out. So I think we'll
Do we ever decide what we're going to do, if we ever have a snow day?
Yeah.
Um, no. Snow days are still available. Uh, it's a choice that you make. The first one, when we had that 20 inches of snow, we knew it was coming on Wednesday, we already virtual. So I told the teachers ahead of time, if we have a snow day tomorrow, like we already thought we were going to, we would just be virtual. So we were ready for that. But if, if it snowed like crazy tomorrow, I am not going virtual, I will call a snow day. So, uh, we have three to use, so I'm not going to worry about having to go to virtual until I have to. Because many, many times, like for instance, there were times I wish I had called a snow day even though we were already virtual, because it took a lot of people long time to get dug out. I really wasn't thinking about that, I was thinking about the fact that we were already virtual, we'll just go with it. So there was a lot of discomfort, not that, uh, anybody called the school and ranting and raving, but I know they had difficulty. So, um, that's the trouble with the virtual, you know, that means people are still working, so they can't go out and take out their homes.
Right.
Uh, to get ready. So, no, I will not always call a virtual day. It will depend on the weather, and it will depend on if we have days to get. And right now, we've got three. Plus the one I took from our four total, that we can get Juneteenth day unless we're in trouble. And then we will be in school that day, and we'll use it as a date as we need it. So that's the plan. Um, as you know, so far this year, the plan doesn't always work. Uh, but that's, that's where I'm going with it right now.
Can we carry snow days over to the next year?
No.
Next time, no.
Which is why we have to give them back. The teachers have 181 days left, or students actually have 180. So if we don't use the snow days, typically here, my contract, they get the day before on the weekend added to it. I've already talked to the teachers about the Juneteenth day, so they can know that. Otherwise, I'd have to take it from somewhere else. And currently, they don't want to lose a day off the February or April break. Uh, and, and I'm quite frankly, in agreement with them, because our, our teachers and staff, they're tired. They're going to need this February break, they don't need us taking days away from them. Unless Canada has already taken two of their February days back. So that's going to be different for them. But right now, I'm hoping we can get to the February break and give everybody a week off. So that's where I am with that.
Do you see the state changing anything in our, uh, money, if you want to keep in our fund balance?
No. That's the top. Whether that's going to happen or not, you do not know. They have asked to allow us to do 4%.
It seems like the COVID in this school.
That was, that's the reason.
20% cutback.
Yeah, that's the reason, and knowing that people, well, as you know, that's why I would have kept extra money from last year's budget. You know, I'll take the little slap by the governor for doing our little letter that they'll ask for. Uh, but if we don't get involved with that by the end of the year, we can keep, we fill our reserves, and still have money for this year's fund balance towards next year's budget. So I'm holding on to that as best I can. So far, we haven't really spent any of it, so. Uh, consider us to be in good shape there. We're going to be getting back, we think, about $100,000 from the health insurance from last year. So this year's increase will be less than it normally would have been. So we're getting some breaks, finally. But I'm, I'm really worried about what the governor is going to put out. So I, I think we'll start getting a better read about what's going on after tomorrow. Because everybody's waiting to find out what's going to happen once the inauguration takes place tomorrow. And I know that our governor is definitely expecting that he's going to get help from the federal government, but we don't know what that means yet. So, as soon as I know, you guys will know.
Need a motion to approve CSC, CPSC minutes and recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel actions 14A and B as presented.
A. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upcoming meetings, regular meetings, February 9th, March 16th, budget review, April 20th, budget adoption. That's only three meetings from now. And then the special meeting, April 21st, for the BOSIs, budget vote. Uh, supposed to be top senior dinner as well. We shall see. And with that, need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Lou, have a good, good rest of the month.
Stay warm, Mary Lou.